So we can do the Pledge of Allegiance first. Okay. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
And one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in rock.
All right, so call the meeting to order. Are there any changes or problems with the agenda?
Both are approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, review of the March 23 regular meeting minutes, we'll do those first. Is there a motion to approve those?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The March 26 special meeting. Is there a motion to approve those?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So approved. Is there any open public comment? I'm guessing no one else has joined. And no guests.
Nobody has asked for the ID or the password. I did furnish it to the media. And it is on the website.
Okay. All right. Anybody have good stuff? Hasn't been a lot going on this season lately, so.
I would say good stuff is people are staying in and that the schools continue to provide meals and have really stepped up. And I'm sure Ben could speak to this, but are really serving not just the students, but the parent population as well.
Okay, that's great.
And we're also being very cognizant of everybody's social emotional health. And we're checking in with students on a regular basis as well.
Okay. I think people are going a little stir crazy now, so there might be some issues. But I think definitely people, I see lesser and lesser cars on the road and people boat, you know, in certain areas. So I guess it's good. So hopefully it'll be over sooner rather than later. Okay. Highway Department.
I'm scrambling because I gotta get the paper out. Okay, we only had one snow event. And again, on March 24th. Paul and Kyle are at home. John is still working on this project that he can do without having to have more than one person and also stay safe. So he was rushing the streets the other day and he's cleaned up here and there. Lot of work in the garage, that's been the biggest thing. And also he was working with the boys at King on the Contract Six as far as locating various items. But now they've shut down, so that's gone. He does a road check on a daily basis, Beaver Pond check, be sure we're going, especially with the rain. He opened the valve at the pool. The pool was raked, Judy was there, or I don't know if you were there Judy, but it was a good group.
Yeah, it was. It was a lot of hard work. Raking mud.
The water level is going back up again. Again, repairing the equipment, the tool cat brushes and servicing trucks. So it's a slow time, he's working about four hours a day right now. But there's nothing he can do that is a safety issue or that he needs another set of hands, it would be too close.
Okay. All right. Anything else under the highway?
I've got nothing else under highway.
Okay, is there a motion to go into the Board of Water Commissioners?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Board of Water, the manager's report?
Okay, you've got Cybers, I've got nothing to add to it because it's fairly close. The big thing was the water project where they were tracing out all the existing lines for the contractor. The other one was the pressure reducing valve, I don't know if I mentioned before, there were high pressure out of the Route 3 area. Where they couldn't control it, they now have it under control and that's taken care of. I haven't heard any repercussions from anybody as far as damage on blow off valves or such. That was back in operation. And the other ones are the activities in process. John and I spent some time going back over the projects that we're gonna do this summer. And the most of them are listed on this sheet here. Hopefully we can get a schedule sometime in June to get it and get them done. One thing that they're doing is they talked about doing their flushing program in the spring rather than the fall. That's something that they could do and stay apart or do on their own. They are still, one person is only there at times at the plant. And they're doing all the work at alternating days.
Okay. So they are working just different days?
Yes.
Okay. Nothing else?
The only other thing, of course, is Contract Six is shut down and nothing is moving.
Right. So everything's pretty much at a standstill until May 15 then?
Excuse me, I didn't pick up on that.
Everything's pretty much at a standstill until May 15 now?
Yes.
A year earlier.
Right. Is that the same though with, for the road? Because didn't they say they were only taking a couple of weeks off?
What was that, this, I didn't pick up?
Guys, they're doing the water project. Originally they said they were just taking a couple of weeks to kind of, you know, steal back. And then, so will they still come back in a couple of weeks, like maybe April 30th? Or are they waiting till May 15th as well?
I'm not sure how they are handling it.
Okay.
As long as, but, you know, it's just said children, they'd have to have somebody there.
Right.
For their regular shifts.
All right. Okay, is there a motion to go out of the water into sewage?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Anything?
The only thing on sewer other than what they've got on it, and there's a, was the High Street backup. Which is still sitting at the insurance company for a decision on which way they're going.
Okay.
And I had been in touch with Alan George regarding whether we were negligent, which is the big issue. The league did not feel we were negligent. Alan has had some questions, we've sent them back to the league as to what they feel. It makes a difference as to what portion of the project insurance or the program we cut fall under. Whether it's the no fault section, which has a $10,000 limit, of which they've exceeded that so far. Or whether it falls under our basic insurance. So it's sitting in their court right now. And I've kept Nicole reasonably up to date that something is happening all the time.
Okay. That was pretty pricey.
What's that, yes, well, the hardwood floor presumably had to be replaced. So that's what the big one was. I have not sent out the copies of the estimates, waiting to see what the league is gonna do. And the big issue was her homeowners insurance did not provide coverage for water damage.
Right.
So they're completely out of it. The rest of the things that they've got on there are just routine. They have talked about starting the sewer flushing program. There's about 10 spots in town that need to be addressed annually. We've just added one more to 11, which is called High Street. But John did the repair up there, he did leave a cleanup, so we could get into that line.
Okay.
On a periodic basis.
Okay. Anything else, Stan, on the sewage?
That's all I've got. The interesting was number seven. It was our chemical for the replaced, Alan, that was only $14,000.
Only?
For 20,000 pounds. It's supposed to last a year. I'm afraid we only budgeted in the current year 12,000, so we're gonna be a little shy on that one.
Yeah, I think the budget might be a little messed up by the end of this year, so.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Is there a motion to go out of sewage and back to the regular meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so additional items. Dan, reviewing of the bills, everybody got those, right?
There is a number on them this time, A, I assume maybe for April 2001, 2002, 2003, so.
Okay.
One thing that I would suggest maybe is if this is gonna continue, is to whether to give authority or whether for a longer term, they're just one meeting at a time.
So, I mean, we're definitely not gonna be meeting until after May 15.
Yeah, you could do it the same way we did it this time. We could bring them up at one meeting and authorize somebody to come in and sign them. You can see everything, if anybody has any questions on any of them, I would be happy to respond to them.
Okay. Did anybody have any questions on any of the invoices?
No questions for me.
Okay. So is there a motion that somebody wants to put forward to authorize myself or someone else to just sign off on these until we come back and meet in person?
I make a motion to authorize the chair to sign off on orders until such time as we begin meeting in the same room again.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Stan, I can come up tomorrow morning and sign those.
Okay, I've got them all here, upstairs.
All right. Okay. Under manager's report, we have the COVID-19.
I guess there was any, whether there's any discussion, I sat through a League of Cities in Town, I don't know if you did Judy, a webinar today. There were only a couple of questions that I had. One was unemployment insurance, nobody has asked for it yet, we're still paying the full salaries for everybody. The other one was the 80 hours of sick leave over and above your normal offer, which I believe, and maybe you know what it is. Will be something that would be qualified for a grant under FEMA. Nobody has been sick yet, so we have that question come up.
Right.
So right now, we're still going along and waiting to see.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember, I don't, for some reason, the FEMA, I didn't know if it was gonna cover the overtime unless people are directly related to the COVID-19, like working in some respect toward, you know, on it. Like any EOC that's set up or something like that, that's gonna be covered and those hours are gonna be covered. We've had questions actually in the city is if someone's in EOC and they need a replacement to cover them, is that gonna be covered by FEMA? So that's kind of a, I'm actually doing a webinar tomorrow with, with the state, so.
You know, there was, I got an email from John Haverstock late this afternoon, and I haven't sent it around, but it was some more information and it did deal with municipalities.
Right.
And the big thing that was on it was you can allow an attorney in to do a deed research if it's a state of an emergency.
Right.
And the issue was, we've got one house that somebody's been trying to sell for quite a while and now they have an offer. And they called today and asked Celia if they could possibly get their attorney in so that they could have a closing. And she felt that that was a hardship case, so that is why.
We have those in the city and we're not letting anybody in because it's, to us, it's, you know, everybody's trying to sell their house.
Yeah.
If they can't, they can't, that's not really an emergency. So we've kind of backed off on no public in the city.
To date, nobody has suggested or asked to be on unemployment. And I still haven't figured out what the benefits are versus what a normal salary would be.
Right.
Nobody's asked for it, so I haven't tried to find out how to deal with it.
Okay. I can check tomorrow too when I talk to the state. All right.
Mosquitoes, I just satched out the notice that we are posting regarding the spray for both adulticide and for larvicide. When they start, I don't know, I've had one inquiry from a resident who was not aware that we were spraying, that we sprayed last year. And I'm not sure whether I answered all his questions, he wanted to know, how did we end up doing it? And that was back to the town meeting a year ago, which approved a $50,000 to spray for mosquitoes.
Right. And I, I saw that, like, he's lived here a while, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not like he's a new resident.
Yeah, what I, what I looked for him on the tax map, he's way on the south end of West Street.
Okay.
But I couldn't find a good address for him.
Right.
So just in case people haven't noticed, Tom's joined us and then we also have a guest that has joined us as well.
Oh, okay.
So I need to know who the guest is.
Charlotte Firestone?
Okay, thank you.
Is that, Charlotte, can you hear us? Charlotte?
Mic is muted right now.
Okay.
She doesn't have a mic.
I'm in shape for the mic, okay.
Can you tell me when Tom joined us?
It was about five minutes ago.
Yeah, I just saw his name pop up now.
Hello, Tom.
I think he's, is he muted too?
I think so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else on mosquitoes, Stan?
No, that was just, the notices are up and I assume that they will start.
Well, they're starting in May, right?
The adulticide, they start, no, the larvicide, they start in April. The adulticide, they start in May, but that depends upon how many mosquitoes they catch.
Right.
Traps in each area.
And so that's considered essential so that they can still do it.
I haven't.
The notice says May 15th.
First, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead Carrie.
I only see one public notice with a date, oh, there's the other one, May begin. Pesticide application will begin on April 15th, the larvicide. I see it now, and then the adulticide is May 15th.
Yeah.
Or whenever they catch enough mosquitoes after that.
Huh?
It can start May 15th, but only if they caught enough mosquitoes.
Yes.
So they could, and they can start this week then?
They could start on the larvicide, yes.
Right, okay.
And they are gonna notify so that we can alert people that we are spraying? I know that seems to be very important to residents.
I get an email from Will, and what I do is put it on the website. And I think last year I did put it on Front Porch Forum. And I can send it to Lisa to add to the Proctor webpage also, so we get the word out that people know it's happening.
That'd be great.
And I think last year it seems like people, if they knew about it, would call other people to kind of give them a heads up or, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Town Office?
Town Office, we have signed, Judy has signed the lease, I've signed the construction contract. The information is going into our grant program, so they're aware of what we're doing. Of course, nothing is gonna start, the contract verbiage is, a notice to proceed will be issued on the day that the governor lifts the executive order. Which would allow construction to happen. So that's the day, what the completion date will be will be based on when we start. The lease is signed, we have talked with the movers, we're ready on this end to move over there. I've talked with Matt Curtis regarding the computer setup and how to get that over there. It's gonna be a little bit of a struggle, the way we put stuff that we don't need. Because I intend to leave a lot of stuff here without, that I don't believe I'm ever gonna need again, just stacked up here in the meeting room.
Right.
And I would talk to Tom and say, yes, when we get out of here, we'll tear out the carpets. Because I would suggest that under the Town Office maintenance budget, that goes into effect on July 1. We would redo both the floor, all the floors upstairs, not part of the construction contract, but part of the maintenance card, maintenance operation.
Okay. All right. Anything else, anybody have questions? No? Okay. Dump Day.
Oh, just, let me go back, grow books are supposed to be here on April 20th. I think I told them before they're gonna be here on April 3rd and then April something else, and now they're April 20th, so.
Okay.
Hopefully before the next meeting, they will be here, so that makes life a little easier for people.
Okay. So Dump Day, hazardous waste and Green Up Day.
Okay, I guess that's kind of me. So we did have a County Solid Waste District meeting last week and it was really long. So the Solid Waste District is unable to forecast the opening of the complete transfer station at this current time. So currently there's no e-cycle, no HHW and limited recyclables. And leaves, it's pretty limited because of where the leaves are, it's extremely muddy. And we continue to get water, like today's gonna probably put leave, bringing your leaves back to them off a couple of weeks, it has to dry out. So that also being said, they are requesting that everybody stay 10 feet apart if they go to the transfer station. You have to have exact change or a check and you have to wear a face mask to go there. So they're talking about, so definitely no hazardous waste day is going to happen in the spring. They don't know when that's gonna reopen. Let's see, people can bring their garbage to the transfer station in increments only. And a reminder, in district folks must have a permit sold at the Rutland County Solid Waste District to rid their garbage, et cetera. If they don't have a permit, they're gonna be charged out of district fees, there's not gonna be any negotiating there. So the permits are like $10. And I have been posting updates on Proctor parents every time I get one. That explains what the costs are, what are the changes every week, so that at least there's some kind of update. So Green Up Day, Green Up Day has been postponed until May 30th. I think that's tentative, we have to see what else is going to happen. I think anything after May 30th, it's probably not gonna happen this year. Because the grass will be too long, leaves will be out. So I think we have to play that by ear as far as Green Up Day. And then I guess my vote on Town Dump Day is, I think we're putting the Town Highway Crew in a pretty, in a, in a situation that they don't need to be in, especially since this isn't gonna get lifted until May 15th. So I am, I guess, asking that we don't do Dump Day in May. And that's all I have.
But I was pushing off to the fall, like just have one Dump Day this year?
And that's what I'm thinking. I think so. A lot of people have reached out to me and asked me about, you know, furniture and all of that. And I've just said, call them, if they can take it, they'll tell you. I'm not gonna tell you either way and put the Solid Waste District, those people in a position either. Because they're unable to help anybody soar or move any kind of refuse at this time.
Okay. So what's everybody think about holding off on Dump Day until the fall, or like, you know, September even or something?
I think that's the way to go.
Okay.
Sure.
Because did we establish two days this year? Should we change, get a motion to just do one time, one Dump Day, or do we need it?
Traditionally it's been the first Saturday of October.
Okay, so wanna just do that, we'll just do the first Saturday in October as long as things are, where we hoping they are?
That's what I'm thinking. Now, does that put us in anything about not having a Dump Day? That doesn't start till next year, right?
Well, we didn't, we didn't budget for, we didn't budget for a Dump Day in 2000, in October 2000, so it's not in your budget.
Correct.
That's right.
You're talking about the transfer station permit, right?
Yes. But there, you know, for a nominal cost, if you feel you want to do it, I'm sure that there are dollars somewhere in the general fund budget that can be diverted to cover that.
I mean, my thought is that, you know, I would like to make good on it, that we're not doing it in April. And so do it in October. And then going forward, this would be the last one, everybody after this would have to go to the transfer station. Those are my thoughts.
Should we wait until like after July just to see where the budget is with all this stuff that's going on that might really throw our budget off? And if the money's not there, then we just say, we're not doing Dump Day this year? I don't know.
I think that's a great idea too, because who knows what our budget's going to be like when we get to that?
Yeah.
You don't know how long this will go on.
Let's just cancel the May Dump Day.
Huh?
Let's just cancel the May Dump Day and leave it at that.
Okay. Everybody okay with that?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, Stan? All right, moving on, Town Plan Public Hearing.
You wanna try to schedule this before the 15th of May? I put the 13th in down there. Do we just let it hang? I don't think anybody's gonna crucify us for not doing something about it.
I think we should wait until after this is lifted, because if anybody does want to, it's a lot easier for people to come to a meeting than to come to an online.
Right. I don't think it's gonna hurt waiting till later.
No, even if we go over a month or two, it's not gonna affect our federal money for roads at all.
Right. I don't wanna keep throwing dates out and then canceling on throwing another date out.
Well, right, and then advertising and we're gonna waste money if we did that, so.
I think we should definitely wait till after May 15th to see where we're at, the state. Everybody have any other needs?
I agree.
You need a motion, Stan?
Excuse me?
Do you need a motion? Or no?
Just, we just, would you schedule it, that's the motion.
All right. All right. Sounds good. Okay. Um, Pittsburgh Food Shelf.
At the last meeting, I discussed what Jarom Haverstock said Pittsburgh was doing and asked us to do ahead. And the, a figure to the board was wait till the food shelf asks us. So here's a letter from the food shelf.
Asking us. What's everybody's thoughts?
My thought on this is, one, what is our budget like? And two, if we do it for one, then, then we have to look at others as well.
Plus, I mean, it's not like we haven't given them something.
Right, they've already gotten $1,000.
I don't know. Anybody else have thoughts, ideas?
Well, we gave them 500.
You mean give them 500 now instead of the 1,000?
Yeah. They're probably hurting.
What's everybody, anybody else agree with that?
I think I'd be okay with a 500 too, just on the chance that other groups are going to ask too. Because more, people go to more than just that food shelf.
Right. Yeah. What's everyone's thoughts?
I don't know if people saw the message, Charlotte messaged us about taking the funds that we would have used for the May Dump Day for the food shelf.
So is there a motion to approve $500 donation to the food shelf?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right. Town manager's search report.
Um, I feel like I should have a private line between me and Teresa and.
Really?
Well, we met three times today, so. What was originally a kind of scary group of candidates as far as qualifications go, we ended up having five that we thought we would like to see Teresa screened in the first round. Of those five, four turned out to be very strong candidates. And so, and I think she finished this afternoon. We have four candidates to be interviewed this week. So phone interviews by the selection committee this week. And then from that, we'll be recommending the folks to go to the full board. But I feel much better about the candidate pool after the second round of applications that we received. So, excuse me, I think you guys, I think Teresa sent you guys resumes. Not yet, okay, I, I know she's, she's working on it. So you'll be able to take a look at those and then we want to get everything. Once, once we've done the screening interview, you'll have everything you need, including interview questions for the, the full interviews. And I think she asked, sometimes you either by the end of the day today or, or tomorrow, for times that the full board is available in order to interview the finalists. But I'm looking forward to, to meeting with these candidates.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody else has on that? Nope. Okay. Um, budget reports.
If you'll notice, I gave you a budget report, which looks reasonably clean to me. I also gave you a second report for the first time in about nine months of a revenue report. One thing that is on the list that, that I should have been doing before, but it kind of slipped through the, the gat hole. But I will be doing revenue reports, which shows how much tax money is coming in versus what we budgeted. That will work out. I did go through while I was doing the revenue report, the expense reports, to do a projection for what I think the end of the year is going to look like. And it's a comfortably in the black. So some of the items, if you'll notice on your report, are big red with parentheses around them. But there's also some heavy ones which are not getting to their limit, and I don't think they will. So I'm anticipating we will still be in the black come September, or come June 30. Whether you will have any surplus funds from prior year to apply to the tax rate. I've gone through, and I think I've come up with, there's about $30,000 surplus in the general fund. Whether you wanted to use the whole amount for reduction of taxes will be a question that you'll have to grasp to deal with in June. Would you set the tax rate?
Anybody have any questions on that budget? Okay. Sheriff's report. Any questions on the sheriff's report or comments?
I don't think it looks pretty complete.
It's pretty quiet out there right now.
I know.
You know, the one that concerned me was the possible attempted suicide.
Oh, I missed that.
Me too.
Where they transported it to the hospital, I believe.
Hmm. That's not good.
Yeah.
Did you notice, did you see the car today over the rock?
No.
Someone sent me a, a picture, a text message with a photo of this car. And I was trying to look at the picture to figure out where it was, and she said, which was wrong, because she said it was at the end of West Street where Meadow. So I'm like, West Street doesn't meet Meadow Street. I don't know where it was. It was on a corner, and there was this huge rock, and the car was up over the rock and just on it.
It's where the old car, it's where that car lot used to be, before you go over the bridge on West Street. Where the building burnt.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, yeah, so I don't know what happened there, but car's not going anywhere. Now we have two cars not going anywhere. This one's easier to get out of there though, so.
The other one moved quite a bit the other day, so.
Huh?
The other one moved quite a bit the other day.
Oh, did it?
Yeah.
Maybe after today it will. It's raining pretty good. Um, and Stan, I just wanted to mention, when, when you talked about the COVID-19, I think you put that on there kind of to talk about that letter too from the Mountain Times, right?
Yes, I said that to you. I did drop, send it out because I didn't hear back from you.
Okay. No, I said to put it on, well, I said to put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
But, so I don't know if you've seen in Rutland, the signs going up around the city about COVID-19. So like, you know, the major steps, stay six feet apart, you know, don't, social distancing, stay home if you're sick, all these things. Cassella backed up to pay for those with the city's approval, so they ordered a lot and they're sprinkling them all over the city. And on top of that, Mountain Times is trying to create like a directory of resources for people to go to. So they're looking, if we have anything that we want to add, maybe about our town meetings or what we're doing differently, or if we have any other concerns that we may want to add into that directory piece of information, so. So maybe Stan, we could just, you could email this to everybody and we can just.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send it out to everybody.
All right. I mean, it's kind of late.
You know, the issue was, I think he was looking for dollars too.
Well, I thought that, but when I read through it, he didn't ask.
On the phone, he asked everybody.
He wanted to help.
But what he put out, what he put in the letter was if you wanted to take an ad out.
Right, that's true.
What was going on in your town.
Ads were costing, okay.
Yeah.
And I don't, I mean, I don't know. I haven't seen it in print yet, so I don't really know. But I think the signs will do a good job, and if they've got information, general information in the area, you know, because like, it's pretty costly advertising. It's like $450 for a quarter page.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds.
We just did an announcement in the newspaper for the city, because we want, we have to revise an ordinance just because of all this COVID. And one day advertisement was $600.
Oh.
Yes.
So. But, so do you want to, do you guys want to see the email and think about it, or?
We'll just take a look at it.
Okay, Stan?
Yeah, I will. He'll be able to do it for everybody else. Since I didn't hear back from you, I just buried it in my stack of paper.
Oh, well, I thought you just said, should we put this on the agenda? And I said, yes.
Did you say yes? I didn't see it.
I did. That's all right. Well, when I saw the COVID on here, I thought, oh yeah, got it on. All right. Is there anything else? Anybody has older new business?
No.
No? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
The move.
It's too early to adjourn.
I know, I'm like looking 6:46.
It's a rumor, I can mute your mic.
It's not like we have anywhere else to go either, so. What do we do now? All right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, see you guys.